Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P. M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. Father Tom Jones is here with us from the Church of the Holy Spirit at thirteen oh five Thomas Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to consider the matters before us, let us do so filled with your grace and with your blessing, so that those who speak, speak not only from their heart, but with words that clearly express the concerns they have, and that so those who must decide are able to do so with wisdom, compassion, and in the best interest of all the people of this fine city. Enable each of us, despite the differences we might bring to this gathering, see how working together for our common good can make a real difference, not only in our lives, but the lives we encounter along the way. Amen. Thank you, Father Jones. Call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Turn your mic on.
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw. Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an ask risk are approved where this this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We have no special presentations. Item eight, organizational matters. We have none this evening. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, did not receive any liquor licenses. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four one six three, and ordinance to adopt the annual appropriations bill. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, since we haven't had our public hearing yet on the on our budget, which we will address here in a couple items, and because of the Sarpy, or I'm sorry, because of the county joint meeting that's going on Thursday, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone to a special meeting on this item, to a special meeting on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at five P. M.
I'll second that.
So we have motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to postpone the special to the special meeting on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at five P. M. here at the council chambers. Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four one six four, request to annex tax lot eleven C, located in the southwest quarter of section thirty-three, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P. M., Sarpy County, Nebraska. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four one six four.
I'll second. I have a question.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Cook. Councilman Cook?
Do we have to read the ordinance?
Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
I will. Ordinance number four one six four, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain land, slots, and real estate lying within the below described boundaries to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Cook. Any comments or questions on ordinance number four one six four? Motion by Casey, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A, ordinance number four one six three, and ordinance to adopt the annual appropriations bill. And the public hearing will be at the special public hearing immediately following this meeting. Su- Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four one six three, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill, to appropriate sums for the necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. And to be clear, the public hearing will be at the special budget meeting immediately following this meeting. The third reading will be September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at five P. M. Item thirteen, ordinances for adoption or introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request to approve the two thousand twenty-five through two thousand thirty capital improvement plan. And I'm going to open fourteen A up for public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Since this sort of ties in with the budget, I'll make a motion we postpone taking action until our a special city council, a special council meeting on September twenty-fourth at five P. M.
I'll second that.
So motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. To postpone action to the special council meeting, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at five P. M. here at the council chambers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Fifteen resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one, bond reimbursement resolution to preserve the city's flexibility in financing capital improvements. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two four dash two one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business. Sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number eight to the lottery contract agreement with Advanced Gaming Technologies, Inc., extending the term of the contract to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve item sixteen B. Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve of the proposal and purchase of a John Deere loader and snow blower from Murphy Tractor in an amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve item sixteen C. Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposed project agreement with MMC Contractors to replace two heat pumps at the Bellevue Library and the Bellevue Professional Center in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred and one dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve closing of Baldwin Field's fence replacement project and a final payment to Clark Construction in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional construction engineering agreement with H. G. M. for the two thousand twenty-four overlay projects, package two, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, recommendation accepting the proposal from F. N. I. C. for the city's property casualty insurance renewal for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, with a total annual premium of eight hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve item sixteen G. Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. September reports will be attached to the October first council packet. Item eighteen, we have no closed session this evening, and nineteen, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right, and give us a brief moment to set up for our special budget hearing. All right, welcome back to the Bellevue City Council meeting to the special budget hearing. It's Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, at about six eighteen P. M. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw. Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item four, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Four A, we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm going to have Shirley take the roll call. Or motion there. All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. And we'll start with item five, special presentations. Five A, presentation of the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget.
I don't think we have a overhit for this, so I'll just run through. This is going to be the same information that, Mayor, you're going to give on Thursday night.
Thursday night.
The joint meeting. And it really just hits a lot of the important points of the budget. Of course, there's so much more that rolls up into these summary numbers, but what this does, it's been a an information page that the state auditor had put together that was based on statutes in the past, and now it's the basic information that we have to give at the joint public hearing. So I'll just read through it quickly. The name of the of the political subdivision is the city of Bellevue. The city of Bellevue proposes a property tax request of thirty-seven million one hundred seventy-five thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, and that will cause its tax rate to be sixty-one cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The current year's taxable valuation, gross taxable, is six billion ninety-four million three hundred and six thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars. The prior year's certified taxable valuation was five billion six hundred forty-one million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And the total assessed value of the property differs this year from last, the six billion from the five-six, by eight percent, so it went up eight percent. The current property tax request is also eight percent higher than the prior year's property tax request, and that is because we held that property tax rate the same at sixty-one cents per hundred dollars of valuation. The dollar amount of the prior year's tax request was thirty-four million four hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents. And of course, that's it went up about two point eight million this year. And that is in line with that eight percent increase that we've just been talking about. The tax rate, which would levy the same dollar amount of property taxes as last year, the thirty-four million, would be fifty-six point four seven oh five cents per hundred of assessed value. So if, since our valuation went up, if we only requested the same amount as last year, the thirty-four million, that tax rate instead of sixty-one cents, it would have been fifty-six cents and some change. The city's current total operating budget is going to be one hundred ninety-eight million five hundred and four thousand four dollars and fifty-four cents, which is twenty-seven point six percent higher than the prior year's total operating budget. That sounds like a lot, but we have a huge number of capital projects that go up and down from year to year, and that makes up most of the twenty-seven percent increase. And then, to obtain more information, you can go out there. There's a presentation on our Bellevue website that will give you more details on this, but that is the basic information that is required. And then, I guess I can try to hold this up, but for Thursday night, every everybody in the city of Bellevue would have received a postcard that would tell you that depending on which area you're in, it would have a county levy that's discussed, a Bellevue school levy that's discussed, or it might not have one if you in one of the other areas, or and the Bellevue city. And it just says that, you know, you're invited to a joint public hearing because the city is requesting taxes that are in excess of its real growth, which was point seven eight percent, plus you get a two percent base. So two point seven eight, we've requested eight percent increase in our tax request, and the allowable amount without going to a joint public hearing was two point seven eight percent. So we would have had to back that off by, I recall if it's something like one point eight million dollars, and that would have meant that there would have had to been some decisions on something to cut. And right now, that was a difficult decision, but we decided to go with the sixty-one cent rate for another year to keep it steady at the rate. And so, again, there will be more information on the website with more details that back up those amounts. And I think that's probably better than putting a lot of small numbers on the on the screen right now. If somebody wants to go out there and look at them, they can take a look, and then they can always ask us questions, email, call, and we'll answer their questions.
Thank you for that, and thank you for having those numbers handy, since I didn't have them with me, and they weren't on the overhead, but.
Yes, sir.
I do, I do want to thank the Budget Committee. There's a lot of decisions to be made, and tough decisions, but necessary decisions, and they've worked hard, along with our finance department. Rich, your staff has been great and get all the numbers that we need to make decisions. And I know I'm I'm not condoning high taxes at all, but I do want to remind people that if you live in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in the city of Bellevue, the portion of your property tax is a hundred and twenty-seven dollars a month is what you're paying for all the city services, and that would include your police, your fire, your streets, your snow removal, your parks, your pools, your library. your streets, your snow removal, your parks, your pools, your library, um and all the permitting and codes and that that's a lot of service for a hundred and twenty seven dollars, but we are working, Bellevue is working very hard on even reducing that amount, um and that's uh we're working hard on transforming our whole model as a city. Uh for years, decades, we've been a bedroom community and um with a bedroom community, it's nice. You don't have the hubbub of a city, but a big city, but uh the residents pay the taxes. So with all the development along Highway thirty four, um some of the changes we're trying to bring within the inner city, uh I think we're on a great path, and I think we are um, we have a bright future as far as lowering our taxes and increasing our city, our city services. And um anyway, that all, that is all in part of what your finance department does, the budget committee and this council, uh what we've been working on. So Rich, I appreciate it. Appreciate the work you and your staff do. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, um can you state how long we, or maybe Rich can, how long we've been at that sixty one cents?
Yes, I can. Let me look at the presentation that you'll find on the website.
I think it's, I was thinking it's been like ten years.
It 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 has. Since uh from fiscal year end, two thousand fifteen through the next fiscal year, twenty twenty five.
So ten years. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks again. Item six, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Six A, ordinance number four one six three, annual appropriations bill. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one six three. An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up six A for a public hearing. So if there's anyone wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four one six three, annual appropriations bill, please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding the resol- uh ordinance number four one six three, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Third reading will be September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four at five P M. Six A one, resolution number twenty twenty four dash twenty seven. A resolution to set the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five property tax request. And I will open up six A one for public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak regarding resolution number two zero two four dash two seven? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding six A one? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be appropriate to push this to September twenty fourth or just make the vote mo- uh do a vote tonight?
Yeah, I think put it on the twenty fourth, just take it all together.
I'll I'll make a motion that we postpone this, the the vote, the the action, that we postpone it until September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at five P M.
No, I think we're
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'll with I think it is.
Suggestion, Dan? I think for the resolution, since we took the public hearing tonight, we would either need to vote on it tonight, or we would need to have a motion to postpone the action until a separate time.
I'll
Yeah, we're safe, but we're safe by postponement.
Okay, I'll postpone it to the September twenty, next Tuesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at five P M.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. To uh hold over six A one to the September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four meeting. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
I think just the clarification is this is the second reading, so we've had the public hearing. We would normally carry it to our regularly scheduled meeting, so I think what Councilman, Council President Cook is doing is just making sure it's clear it won't be at a regular meeting, it'll be at a special meeting, so I think his motion and the change to the twenty fourth is appropriate.
And that would be the actual third reading?
That will be the actual, correct. It's it's not anything special, and we're not really delaying anything. We are just instead of having it at a regular meeting, we're having it at a special meeting. Trying to be even clearer. Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Uh please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Casey. Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries. What were you saying?